Got a little too much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining tonight for the city council meeting on January 18, 2022. I'm Ashley Stolzman, Lewisville's mayor, and because of COVID-19, our meeting's being electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee can raise their hand, and you'll find a raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you've called in by phone, you can dial star nine, and we'll see a raised hand appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge the member of the public and the clerk on YouTube, please tell us your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on another topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. At the beginning of the meeting, there'll be general public comments for items that are not on our agenda. And I just want to let folks know that the Marshall Fire is on our agenda. So if you have comments on anything fire-related, if you could please save your comments for that topic. Once we get there, we'll have a staff update, and then we'll get to public comment on that. But if there are items that are unrelated to the fire or not on the agenda, as always, you can bring those up on public comments on items that are not on the agenda. And so I just want to thank everyone very much for following these directions to help us maintain meeting decorum. With that, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzman.
Here.
Mayor Portem Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Most.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The agenda is approved. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda tonight, or for items that are on our consent agenda. If there are any members of the public that would care to discuss a topic that's not on our agenda, and just want to reiterate for folks that the Marshall Fire, any fire-related topics are on the agenda tonight. So if there are topics not on the agenda or topics on the consent agenda, please raise your hand and tell us what you'd like to tell us. First, we have, and just a reminder to everyone, we have a number of attendees on the call tonight, and so we do need to enforce our meeting rules where folks stick to three minutes for their comments. If you have things that go beyond that, it's not that we don't want to hear from you, we just need to get it in a different forum. So if you could write us or call your council member directly, otherwise, we won't be able to get through everything on the agenda tonight. So thank you so much. First in the queue, we have Lori.
Hi, everybody. I... You're gonna have to bear with me, and I will do my absolute best to stick to three minutes, but I lost my home in the fire, and I also have a traumatic brain injury. So I have some notes, and I just wanted to get my talking points out, and I will do it as quickly and efficiently as I can. So first, if I understand correctly, is the sitting... City planning on moving forward with the Redtail Ridge election?
I'm sorry, I'll just clarify for everybody on the call. So this is the public's time to tell council what you would like to tell us, and it's not on our agenda. So council can't have a discussion about any of the topics, but we're here to listen to folks. It doesn't mean we won't follow up in the future, but you have three minutes to tell us anything you'd like to tell us.
Okay, so here, I'll try and go as fast as I can. We lost our house in the fire, abstained so many other families, and I understand a few council members and my... Condolences, my grief goes out to everybody. This... There's no neighborhood for us left to canvas if we were to try and move ahead with an election for Redtail Ridge. The community is dealing with grief and PTSD. Many of us do not have long-term housing yet after the fire. For instance, me, in terms of PTSD and grief, I'm afraid to let my family out of my sight, including my dog. So I need to know where everybody is at every time. I believe that we need to rebuild on... We need to rebuild our community before we add any additional structures and businesses, or whatever Brew Bake All wishes to build at this time. I believe we need to focus on bringing our community back and getting everyone whole who lives here. Another thing is safety. Well, let me back up one point. I think the election of Redtail Ridge can be put on hold because we needed 403 signatures. We got 783 in a very short period of time with a very grassroots effort. And I think about my 37 minutes that I had to leave my house on 804 Spyglass Circle to St. Andrews to make a left on Dillon. And we... I don't know what would have happened if we would have had construction traffic and all of the extra traffic in Lewisville that that planned development would have brought to our community. We would have lost... I believe we would have lost lives. So after what's happened to this community and the PTSD and the grief we're all struggling with together, I just want to call into account the fact that we have one way in and one way out of our neighborhood, and that could have affected whether or not we manage this tragedy with our lives.
Thank you, Lori. And folks, I am so sorry that we have to enforce the rule tonight, but just to make sure that we can get everybody's comments, thank you so much for your comments, and we'll go to the next person. Next, we have RJ Harrington.
Good evening, council neighbors. RJ Harrington, 457 East Rain Tree Court. Noting with some degree of sadness, the loss of Katie Baum, our sustainability coordinator, and the posting of her position. Thank you very much for focusing on refilling Katie's position. I'm certain you'll have a lot of qualified applicants, and I know that during budget discussions over the years, there has been discussion about filling that position at a significant salary increase and not have it be a consistently grant-funded position. I know in the midst of all of other other expenses right now, Marshall Fire recovery that might get pushed to the bottom of the list, but I suggest that the best way to attract a qualified applicant to replace Katie's excellent work is to seriously consider that being a full-time salary position. Thank you all for everything. Signing off for now.
Thank you. Next, we have Megan. Megan M.
Hi, everybody. My name is Megan Mosher, and I'm a teacher at Monarch High School, 329 Campus Drive. I'm here tonight to read a letter signed by over 70 Monarch High School and Monarch K-8 staff members in regards to campus drive. I submitted a copy of the following letter and a list of signees by email this afternoon to all city council members. That'll be in your email. The letter reads as follows: "We, the undersigned, represent members of the Monarch High School and Monarch K-8 communities who are requesting prompt action to address serious safety and transportation concerns related to the combined campus of our two schools. During the recent and tragic Marshall Fire, the communities of Lewisville and Superior were ordered to evacuate as quickly as possible. Most people left their neighborhoods by car and were able to get to safety, avoiding injury and loss of life. Some of the most indelible images of this catastrophe include videos of people fleeing stores and homes as quickly as possible as the flames raced through their houses and businesses. Our concern is that such an evacuation would not have been possible during normal school hours. At the end of every school day, there's a traffic jam that can result in taking up to 30 minutes for cars to completely depart the school campus via campus drive, which I'm sure some of you have experienced. To date, this has been an inconvenience, but if another disaster were to strike, the consequences could be deadly. The traffic problems stem from the fact that campus drive has only one connection to other streets via 88th. We believe that connecting campus drive to 96th Street would greatly increase the ability of cars and buses to enter and leave campus, both during regular operations and more critically, in the event an evacuation is necessary. Moreover, extending and improving campus drive would also help address a number of safety problems that were apparent before the Marshall Fire. There's currently no continuous sidewalk along campus drive for students and staff who walk to Monarch High. There are also designated and separate bike lanes, so any bikes coming in, especially from the south along 88th Street, must mix in with traffic on a road with no shoulder. Given that many of these pedestrians and bike riders are children, we believe their safety should be prioritized, and extending campus drive would provide an opportunity to do so quickly. We request that you work with the Boulder Valley School District and other stakeholders to immediately find a solution that will improve this critical safety issue, and we look forward to a prompt reply describing your plans. You may contact me on our behalf. Thank you so much for your attention to this important matter."
Thank you very much, and I just want folks to know that we have the Division of Insurance with us tonight, and so we'll take this public comments through 615. And if there are public comments that go on beyond that, we'll continue to take public comments on items not on the agenda at the end of the meeting because we don't have infinite time with some of the guests that are joining us tonight. So next, on items that are not on our agenda, we have John Malansky.
Good evening, council residents of Lewisville. My name is John Malansky. I'm at 450 Fillmore Court here in Lewisville. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Lewisville Fire Protection District. And some may not know that our fire department is actually run as a special taxing district and is not part of the city of Lewisville. The reason I wanted to speak briefly is that it is run by a five-person board, and there is an election this year. It's coming up in May, and three of the five board positions will be up for election this year. I believe the election date is May the 3rd of 2022. So anyone who is a resident of the district, which is pretty much the city of Lewisville and some surrounding areas, or owns property inside of the district, can run for this board. It's a term of four years, and basically it meets once a month. The board essentially administers and operates the district, so financial things, approving budgets, making service agreements, responding to changes. So if you're interested in helping the fire department, especially as a result of the recent calamities, and especially if you have any background in finance or have been on boards before, I would greatly encourage you to consider joining this board of five that runs our fire department in Lewisville. You can find information about it at the website, lewisvillefire.com, and just click on District Board, and you'll see a page there for elections. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christian Dino.
Sorry about that. My name is Christian Dino. I live at 967 Eldorado Lane in Lewisville, Colorado. It's my understanding that there is a current moratorium on single-family residential permits because the recently adopted 2021 International Energy Conservation Code is impossible to comply with as it's currently adopted. I'm one of 600 families that are currently displaced as a result of the Marshall Fire tragedy, and I'm already working on plans to rebuild my family home. I know several other families that have already begun this process as well. How are any of us supposed to get permits through when the codes to design to are not even finalized, and the building department cannot even issue one permit currently, much less the 600 that are quickly coming? The adoption of the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code adds costs upon costs upon costs to displaced residents that are already struggling with the fact that they are underinsured and do not have enough money to rebuild. It is insensitive to the needs of all those families to stand behind the 2021 IECC code adoption as opposed to reverting back to the codes that were in place only a month prior to this tragedy. I'm asking council to consider the impact that this will have on all of the families and retract their adoption of the 2021 IECC until a later date when issues with it can be fleshed out and resolved, allowing everyone's focus to be on what's really important, putting 600 families back in their permanent Lewisville homes.
Thank you. And so that ends our public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. So that takes us to our consent agenda. I approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Any council comments this evening? Seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report, and obviously, the city manager's report will be on non-fire-related issues. City Manager Durbin.
Thanks, Mayor. You're exactly correct. I have nothing additional.
Thank you. And so that takes us to our regular business, and our first and primary agenda item is the city Marshall Fire Recovery and Related Policy and Work Plan Item Updates. The plan, the majority of the meeting will be turned over to our city manager, Jeff Durbin, to take us through items. But first, we are very lucky and fortunate to be joined this evening by Michael Conway, our Colorado Insurance Commissioner. Michael, thank you very much for joining our city council meeting tonight. And so Michael was gracious enough to come to kind of give us a very high-level overview of some of the things that they're hearing and what people can do because we're hearing from a lot of community members around questions on insurance and things related. So no better person could join us this evening than Michael, and with that, I'll turn it to you to make any comments that you'd want to, and then give council members a few moments to ask any questions that we might directly have before we go on to the rest of the agenda. Michael, thank you so much for coming.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, for having me here tonight. The mayor reached out to us. Mayor, what was it? About an hour or two?
20 minutes ago.
And asked to have somebody on tonight to talk with you all about some of the underinsurance issues that are out there right now, and some of the conversation in particular that's out there right now. So first, folks, let me start by saying it is truly, and this isn't just me blowing smoke. I am incredibly sorry for your loss. I can't tell you how sorry I am for your loss. I've talked to a number of homeowners about everything that they're dealing with right now, from the loss of pets to the just basic loss of their home, and it is heartbreaking. Obviously, it's heartbreaking, and I wish there was something more that I could do other than to tell you that the Division of Insurance is going to be there to help you through this process, but that I can guarantee you is going to be the case. And I know one of the issues that is first and foremost of concern out there right now is the underinsurance issues that folks are talking about and that have come to the DAC, the Disaster Assistance Center, and talked with my team at the DAC quite extensively about. So the basic advice that we're giving to people right now is that we know that there is a lot of conversation out there and a lot of concern out there about underinsurance issues. And folks, I'm not gonna lie to you, there are going to be people that run into problems with not having enough funds from their insurance company from their claim in order to fully fund their rebuild. But I also know that there's a lot of conversation out there right now that is just people getting a little bit out in front of their skis about how big of a problem that they may end up having. So what I've been urging people to do is to follow the claims process. Make sure you file your claim and work with your insurance company to find out how much money that you actually have to rebuild. And we're going to be doing some work on our end at the Division of Insurance, both on a data side to have some conversations with insurance companies that have the claims that you all are filing to understand how big of a problem we have out there, but then to also give you all some tools in order to figure that out yourselves with your insurance company, to be able to go to your insurance company and request of your insurance company some help to figure out how much money you're going to have in order to rebuild. But one of the things that's happening right now is that people are having conversations, at least anecdotally, what I'm being told. People are having conversations with contractors or architects about what the rebuild costs may be right now as we sit here today. And the rebuild dollar amounts, the cost per square foot that are being shared with me at $700 or $800 a square foot that people are being told that they're going to have to pay just cannot be accurate, folks. And the conversations that I've had with builders have reinforced that that almost certainly isn't going to be an accurate number of what the rebuild costs are going to be. That's why I say it's so incredibly important to follow the claims process right now. File your claim, work with your insurance company, see how much money you're going to have in order to rebuild. If you are underinsured, if it gets to the point as you work through the process and you are underinsured, or you feel like you're being... What you're being told by your insurance company means that you are going to be underinsured, I want you to file a complaint with us. One of the things that we're going to be working on at the Division of Insurance, one of the many things that we're going to be working on at the Division of Insurance, is to understand what the systemic problems that we have coming out of this fire are and how we can best help consumers rebuild, and the city of Lewisville and the city of Superior rebuild, for that matter. And in order to do that, in order to understand those systemic problems, we need people to file complaints with us. We can have lots of conversations like this, and I will continue to have lots of conversations like this, but we are always going to have to kind of dig into the weeds to understand where the problems are. The other kind of two pieces of information that are vitally important, and they're interconnected, and I know a lot of you have already heard this, and I'm probably repeating things that you know, but applying with FEMA and applying for potential SBA loans is going to be really important on the underinsurance side. So FEMA has their individual assistance grants, which reach up to about $39,000. I don't remember the exact number, and I don't have that in front of me. But then on top of that, the SBA will have loans that are available for people at low interest rates that qualify for those low-interest rates for rebuild costs if they are underinsured. But that's all going to be downstream, too. So the last point that I'll make, Mayor, and then I'll shut up, and you all can ask any questions that you want, and anybody that's on can ask questions as well. The last point to keep in mind, folks, is that we are... We're months away, at the very least, of actually rebuilding. So I know there's a lot of concern out there right now about inflation costs, supply chain issues that are happening on the ground as we sit here right now. The issues that are going to be in play, the inflationary world that we will be in, the supply chain world that we will be in, when we're actually getting to the rebuilding portion of rebuilding, is going to be vastly different than where we are right now. So the world's going to look different when we get there. So keep that peace in mind, too. So, Mayor, I told you I would kind of keep my comments brief, only so that I can be here to answer as many questions as I possibly can from the city council members, but then also separately from the public, if that does follow your process, not to get in front of your process, but want to answer questions from anybody and everybody that I can.
Thank you very much. Thank you again so much for joining us on short notice. And so just the key takeaway that I've been trying to understand from your division is just if people find themselves in a place where they feel they're very underinsured, they should file a complaint with the Division and start that process so that the data can be collected and looked at. That's correct, right?
That is correct, Mayor. And it's more than the data, just to be clear with folks, too. The data is important for us to kind of see where we want to go with any systemic problems that we see out there, but my team will also be able to individually help people work through the process and have them understand what their options are, too. But the data component is key so that we can address those systemic problems that we very well may see.
Thank you very much. And then particularly in talking to some of the staff members that were at the DAC, they were very concerned about people who had very new policies, like policies that are less than six months old. And so if you find yourself in that position, follow the same advice, but it's... You know, there is likely help and negotiation available, so just do follow those processes. And so I'll turn it over to council members for questions first. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Two main questions. So, one, thank you so much for being here. It's fantastic to have you as a resource tonight. You know, clearly, when we're looking at the scope of this many homes and this many homeowners sort of universally being underinsured, that to me, and I think to a lot of people, says, well, there's certainly a problem either with the system, or there's an externality here. And I would like to assume there's not a problem with the system, the insurance companies are charging. So a very brief anecdote, I actually spoke to my insurance agent back in like October about maybe upping my insurance because I was concerned that I didn't have enough money to cover the rebuild of my home, which is newly remodeled. And we had a great conversation, and he ushered me that I was okay. And part of the reason being, listen, if you lose your house, say you have a house fire, you don't tend to lose your whole house. So a tree falls on your roof, you have a kitchen fire, something happens, and there'll be plenty of money to repair what happens. For instance, you never have to replace your foundation, right? Really, no matter what happens. The foundation's intact, so the excavation, the grading, the foundation, you know, usually, we're talking about, you know, something much less. And so my insurance agent, with an opportunity to charge me more every month, said, that's not really necessary. We don't see the need to replace an entire home very often. So I'm thinking about, obviously, you know, if I had lost my home, and I was lucky enough not to, going back to that insurance agent, being like, I feel like I have a pretty big issue here since I even brought this up. But the point I really want to make tonight is, if 80% of our residents were properly insured and 20% were underinsured, then we'd be talking about, gosh, you know, maybe they didn't have insurance. This is unfortunate. But if 100% of our residents were underinsured, clearly, there's a problem that needs to be fixed on a more universal level here, where whether it's the Department of Insurance or these individual insurance companies or the federal government, this isn't right, right? And so I'm just wondering, in other places and other catastrophes, there has to be a mechanism when the system is broken, and it's not individual insurance companies and individual customers of insurance companies that have made an error. I don't blame our insurance companies, and I don't blame our residents. So what happens in a situation like this?
So I think, Councilmember, you touched on a number of different things that are coming into play here. And the issue that tends to be at the forefront on the underinsurance problems. And to be clear, the underinsurance issues are always an issue when it comes to catastrophes along this nature. When you talk to the folks out in California with all of the fires that they have had in California, where they've had numbers, where they've had over the last five or six years, they've had a number of communities get destroyed by fires similar to the fire, the Marshall Fire, they continue to struggle with the underinsurance problem. And the underinsurance problem, the reason why, in part, they struggle with it is because the underinsurance runs into affordability concerns very, very quickly. And understanding the best way to solve for that problem is the nut that quite hasn't been cracked yet, but it's one that we're going to be focused on quite a bit. I will tell you, though, that when you say 100% of the residents very well may be underinsured, that's not going to be the case. There are a number of residents that have guaranteed replacement coverage in their policies that those folks will be fine. And if those folks are hearing from their insurance company that they are running into any problems whatsoever, they too should reach out to us so we can work through those problems or those potential problems. But it's the affordability running into the underinsurance conversation that continues to, like I said, be that tough nut to crack. Now, there are going to be conversations like what you had with your insurance agent that are going to need to be unpacked over the coming months, over the foreseeable future, if folks were given information that just wasn't accurate or wasn't correct by their insurance agent or by their insurance company. And those are going to be also those kind of systemic issues that we're watching out for and looking for. If we've got companies that are across the board, their consumers were underinsured, of course, we're going to be paying attention to that. If there were agents where that was the case, of course, we'd be paying attention to that, too. So there's just a lot to unpack as we go forward, but we're at the forefront of this. And like I said at the beginning with Mayor Stolzman's question, the most important piece right now is to make sure that people actually file their claims because one of the issues that... And I could be wrong about this, and I hope I'm wrong about this. But one of the issues that I'm very concerned about is that people just aren't filing claims because they're so worried about the underinsurance problem that they very well may have in the future. We've got to unpack that. We've got to find out what the severity of the problem is. Once we figure out that piece, then we can find the solutions, and you've got my commitment to find those solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Most?
So just a quick follow-on to what Councilmember Dickinson just said. All of us, everyone I know now is calling up their insurance, and I guess this is just anecdotal information. But I discovered today, for a very trivial amount of money, very, very trivial amount of money, less than $50 a year, that I could upgrade my policy to full replacement value. Now, that's shocking to me, right? That insurance company, that wasn't an option? Nobody told me about that? Like, you know, it just goes to this concept of policies and practices, and I guess I'm not as forgiving of the insurance companies as my fellow council member is. It's just shocking to me that some... Now, I've talked to other people who've had very different experiences, but it seems to me that there's something more holistic going on here, if, you know, especially if people are requesting to get coverage and they're being discouraged from doing it. It seems to me that we have a problem, and I imagine this is a broad problem across the country, but I would certainly like to see the state of Colorado, at the very least, in response to this crisis, put some policies in place that, you know, prevent that kind of situation from happening.
Yeah, Councilmember Most, I think you're right, that we should be thinking about ways to be proactive. Early on in my career as insurance commissioner, I was called an activist insurance commissioner, and the person didn't say it because they were trying to pay me a compliment. So what I can tell you is that we're having lots of conversations with insurance companies, what I've urged them to do, and this is in direct response to your question, but it's your comment, really, but it's at the... Um, and this is in indirect response to your question, but it's, it's your comment really, but it's, it's at least um, in the same direction. What I urge them to do is to work tirelessly and as hard as they can and to be as reasonable as they possibly can with people coming out of this fire. And that, and I've told them, um, and implored to them that that's my expectation. Uh, but if that's not the case, and even if it is the case, I think you're going to see lots of different ideas and concepts coming forth in order to deal with the problems that we're, that are going to be highlighted by this fire. And that education component um, is certainly one of those pieces. There's also a component of that education piece that, that we, we have to take on at the Division of Insurance and make sure that we're getting out and talking with folks and educating them. Um, about what their options are and about what they should be thinking about. It's not always the case that um, people want to hear from the, the insurance commissioner, but um, that's, that's okay. We can still get out and, and do some work along those lines.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Portemaloni?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, thank you for being here. Um, such short notice and. Uh, being willing to take our questions because we're all working our way through this and. And one of the things I, I think that uh, I'll speak for the rest of the council, I think. We'd love for you to be an activist commissioner and I think the public that's on the call would agree with that as well. So. Um, you know, we're trying to understand this and so our questions are coming from. Uh, the perspective of under, of trying to understand it and not questioning you, but. One of the questions that I have is you talked about underinsurance. Um, I completely believe you, that's true. I'm a person who always likes data and likes to be able to do the math around that and understand that. You know, the, the, you, you mentioned the rebuild cost of, it's not seven or eight hundred dollars. You know, I'm guessing it's somewhere half of that. Or something along those lines and, and I don't think any of us know that yet. And so. Uh, we're, we're trying to dig through this and understand this and. I appreciate your perspective that we need to gather more data, we need to understand this better. Um, and that we shouldn't be jumping to conclusions on this and. You know, the, the idea of things like guaranteed replacement costs, I don't know if that should be legislated policy or maybe. Um, educating us as consumers of insurance, you know, so that's just a thought. Uh, you know, guidance around that. I, I, I have a um, a very good agent. And he's guided me through some of those things where he would say, yeah, another fifty dollars, then you could do this or whatever. And so I, I feel pretty good about where we're at, but. I don't know if everybody has that same old guidance and maybe that's something you can help us as consumers with. So thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Portemal. Just a, a very quick response, Mayor Stoltzman, and I promise I, I won't talk this much. Um, but I, it, so. I don't mean to say that, that folks are jumping to conclusions. Um, I, I know that people are rightfully concerned about what they are hearing and what they are being told. The, the point that I'm really trying to make is that this is, this is going to be a marathon. Um, and we're at the very start of this marathon and there's going to be a lot that we're going to learn as we get through it. Um, and what I, what I just want to urge folks to do is not let what they're hearing right now. Stop them from following the process because the process is, is in place and it's important. And that'll help us figure out what the solutions are.
Thank you very much. And we're, actually you are the star of the show right now. So you, anything that you want to say, people are interested to hear. So thank you very much. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And thank you, Commissioner, for being here. Um, full disclosure for the community, uh, the Commissioner is actually my boss in my day job. So before I answer, ask this question, everybody should know that, but so the. Uh, I'm sort of a plant, I guess. Um, I wanted to, to get the uh, commissioners. Uh, you, you mentioned Commissioner that uh, folks should reach out to the Division of Insurance. Uh, I wondered if you could talk a little bit about how the best ways for folks to reach out to the division. Um, and then some of the opportunities that are coming up for folks to engage with the division at town halls. Um, and elsewhere where there, there can be some resources for folks.
Absolutely. So thank you, councilmember Brown. And, and he's, he's not a plant, he's never a plant. He's Cal Brown. Uh, so there's, there's a, a few ways that you can reach us. So right now we're at the DAC, um, we're at Disaster Assistance Center. Uh, we'll be there throughout the, throughout, while the Disaster Assistance Center is there. We may go to a, a period where we're not there all of the time, where we just have established hours there so. That we've got our people that are there, um, as we transition more to getting phone calls and emails from folks. Um, they have a greater ability to be able to actually answer phone calls and emails and, and help folks that way. Um, because it's the same staff that's at the DAC that would be answering, answering our phone calls and our emails. Uh, the phone call, the phone number three oh three eight nine four seven four nine zero. Again, that's three oh three. Eight nine four seven four nine zero. Our email address is Dora underscore insurance. Again, that's D O R A underscore insurance at state.co.us. Um, so you can go any one of those three routes or perhaps the easiest route for a lot of people in today's. In today's world is just to go to our website. So our website is, uh, if you, if you just Google the Colorado DUI, you'll, you'll find our website, but it's. Doi dot Colorado dot gov. Um, and on that website, you can file a complaint directly there as well. Um, so there's a number of different ways to find us, um, for those of you that are, uh, that, that have, uh, councilmember Brown's email address. You can reach out to him directly and he, he's got all my phone numbers and all my email addresses, Commissioner, Mayor Stoltzman. Has uh, my phone number now too, because I called her earlier. So um, and you, you can, you can find me in all sorts of different ways too. So please reach out to us and we want to help.
Thank you. And then Commissioner, if I could ask you one more question, there are a lot of, a lot of folks in Louisville who have. Uh, who may not have had a total loss, but may have been um, severe, their, their homes may have been severely damaged. Or uh, by fire, or sorry, by fire, by ash, by soot. Um, you know, do, do you have any folks or any advice for those folks in terms of? How to work with their insurance uh, companies, um, and what they can kind of expect, um, if they file a claim?
Sure. Um, so one, we have a town hall on this tomorrow night. Um, so we've got on that website that we, that I just laid out for you. Um, we've got a, a webpage directed, a page directed specifically to the Marshall Fire. Um, and we've had one town hall, we had a town hall. Uh, I want to say it was last Tuesday, folks, and I think it was about a week ago. Uh, and we're going to have another one tomorrow night. The, the town hall last week, which the recording for that. Is up on our website and apologize if you can hear the three-year-old running around downstairs. Um, but the town hall, the, the recording of that um, is on our website. We've got our slides that are up on our website as well. Tomorrow night, we're going to have a town hall dedicated to smokes at Nash. Um, so in the insurance world and insurance parlance, which you never want to learn insurance parlance for all sorts of different reasons, but we call that partial loss. Um, so smokes at Nash damage um, is going to be one of the bigger issues that we, that we run into, folks coming out of this fire. Um, there, the, the, the folks that have, that are going back into their homes now. Um, that were in the immediate uh, kind of uh, surroundings from where the fire hit, in the immediate community of where the fire hit. Um, a lot of, if your home is still standing, you very well may have some pretty severe smokes at Nash or heat damage or any, any number of different things that have occurred. To your home, um, because of the fire. Now, it might look like your home is perfectly fine from the outside and then when you get inside, that you, you realize that you have some pretty severe damage on the inside of your home. So we're going to have a few different experts, two different experts walking through the different issues and different kind of thoughts and, um, things that you should be. Considering if you do have smokes at Nash damage. Um, you should be working with your insurance company and filing a claim for that spokes at Nash damage as well. Um, those claims tend to be a little bit more difficult to work through candidly, um, than the total loss claims. But again, that's what we're here to help with. Um, the, the, the town hall tomorrow night. Will answer some questions, but a number of you are going to have a number of more questions after the town hall as you start to work through the process. In part, folks, because spokes at Nash damage um, can have a really long tail on it. Some of the things that might be occurring in your home or may occur as you go back into your home, you may not realize that you have that damage for weeks or months to come. So we'll, we'll have a whole bunch of more advice and a whole, a lot more information for you tomorrow night. Um, but the piece that I want to make sure that I say too about these town halls, and I've said it a number of times on the town halls and I'll continue to say it. These aren't going to be one-offs. We're going to continue to have these town halls. We're going to be, continue to be here for the community to answer questions. But these town halls really can be a productive way for us to engage and, and, and answer a lot of questions that the community has.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee?
Yes, thanks Commissioner for joining us tonight. And I, uh, I can't. I can't underscore how much appreciation I have and I, I suspect. Uh, the rest of the council and perhaps our entire community has for your visibility. Um, you're getting out there, not just yourself, you only have a hundred sixty-eight hours in a week. But your folks being out there, a, a number of us have been over to the DAC. Uh, or worked at the DAC table for Louisville. And um, y- your table is just a couple down from where, where ours is. And it's been very busy and folks have been really good about answering questions. So I, I really appreciate that. I also uh, wanted to say thanks for the guidances that you're putting up. Um, which, which I think all of us are trying to push out to people we know and people in the community. So. Those are really helpful. And I've found the DOI's guidances to be particularly useful for people. And there's just a lot of fear, as you know, it, it's, it's, there's anger and there's all kinds of hard, strong feelings. But I think people are just, they're just really unsure because literally the foundation.
Yep.
Uh, under them has been shaken. So thank you for that. Um, my, my question, I see that you used to work for the Attorney General's Office once upon a time, but I wonder. Can you say a little uh, about, I, I guess, an issue that I'm very concerned about, which is just the consumer protection aspect. Of a lot of what's going on right now in our community, just making sure that people get. Uh, supported in, you know, dealing with insurance problems, but also some of the other. Uh, issues that come up on consumer protection. How do you, in the DOI? Uh, excuse me, how does the DOI work with the AG's office on? Uh, consumer type complaints and where should people go? Should they come to you e- entirely? Or they should go both places? What can you tell us?
Yeah, councilmember, that's a, it's an excellent question. Um, I, I did work at the um, AG's office. I was an assistant attorney general for. Um, almost six years, um, uh, before I came over to the Division of Insurance. So uh, as far as complaints are concerned, what I, what I really want to have folks, what I want to urge folks to do is to come to us for those, their, their initial complaints. So that we can work through the process. We have a very close relationship with the AG's office. Um, we work with them both within the insurance unit, which, so the way that the AG's office essentially works. Is that there's an insurance unit at the AG's office that works directly with the Division of Insurance and they represent us, um, at the, at the Division of Insurance. Um, so they'll represent us if we, if we see any of those systemic issues that we feel like we need to take an enforcement action against a company or companies. The, the, the AG's office, that section, that unit within the AG's office would represent us. Separately, there is a consumer protection unit within the AG's office. Um, and what I can tell you is, is back with the Waldo Canyon, um, in the Colorado Springs area with that fire in twenty thirteen. Uh, it got, did get to the point that the Division of Insurance had to uh, make a, a recommendation to the Consumer Protection Unit with AG's office. That they needed to investigate the issues that we, they do, the DOI was seeing in the consumer, um, out of that Waldo Canyon fire. My expectation, councilmember, is that we won't get there with this fire. My expectation of the insurance companies and what I made abundantly clear to them. Um, is that if, that I expect them to step up and, and, and follow through on the promises that they've made to your communities. Um, but if they don't, um, and, and there are issues that we can't fully address through the DOI. Um, then that is something that it will always be an option for us. To recommend to the Consumer Protection Unit within the AG's office that they take a look at any particular issue. Um, but again, it's from my expectation and I, I'm biased. So I want to, I want to be clear on that front. I'm biased that I want all the complaints to come to us. So that we can figure out the best way to help people. Um, that's why I want them to come to us, but there are, to your point, councilmember, there are other avenues for people to go, of course.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And so um, the Commissioner has been gracious enough to offer that he will answer some community questions also. So I just want to preface this by saying we are going to have a staff presentation from our local staff. So any comments on? Other topics, if people could please hold those until the public comment period that follows the staff presentation on the fire. But if you have questions specifically related to insurance, that you raise your hand at this time. And I just ask everyone, please keep the questions at this point in time related to the Division of Insurance or insurance in general. Um, and if we don't get through everybody, because the Commissioner only has fifteen more minutes with us. Um, that please send those in because, you know, people are working for you at the questions answered. So first we have Rob Scott.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, we lost a home at nine four six for Apple Circle. Commissioner, you uh, made a statement earlier. You said that. You know, the insurance companies ha- uh, have a guaranteed replacement value and that we'd be fine. But the problem with the guaranteed replacement value is it's far lower than the cost per square foot of, of construction. I, I'm not looking at the, the uh, numbers you met, mentioned earlier, the six to eight hundred per square foot. I'm talking about three, three to four hundred dollars per square foot. And so there's a cap on our policy of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, it's going to cost us at least six hundred thousand to rebuild. So that's my big beef with the insurance company when they say you have replacement value, you don't, because there's a cap on that replacement value. So I just wanted to clarify something, maybe get your, your uh, uh, response to that, because that's not what I'm seeing.
Yeah, it, miss.
And just let me, sorry, let me just say, so normally we don't do back and forth, but in this unique circumstance. Um, since we have the Commissioner volunteering to answer questions, we'll let the Commissioner answer the questions tonight. But I just want to make it clear to folks that we normally take questions and synthesize them and come back. So this is an exception to what we would normally do under the rules. Commissioner?
Sorry, Mayor. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Scott. So to, uh, uh, what, on the point that I was making earlier. So assuming that the coverage is true replacement cost coverage, um, where, where there isn't a cap at all. Those are the folks that I was, that I was referring to when I was answering um, councilmember Dickinson's um, question and comments. But Mr. Scott, what I would, what I would like to ask you to do is to go down that process of filing that complaint, uh, complaint with us. So that we can unpack what is actually happening and who your insurance company is. Um, so that we can understand how the, the product was marketed to you and, and, and make sure that it was marketed to you correctly.
Very good. Thank you. I love your daughter running around in the background. That's fantastic. Good for you.
Thank you. Next we have Ann.
Yes, I'm Ann Brennan. Uh, my husband Kevin and I lost our home at eight eighty-eight Larksburg Court. And uh, one question for the Commissioner is if uh, Colorado is going to try to do anything related to having. Um, the insurance companies give us our full replacement cost on contents without having to inventory. Thank you.
So Ann, that is, um, that is a, an ongoing conversation uh, uh, across a number of different um, avenues. For lack of a better way to say it. Um, I don't know that it will get to the point that it is ever full, the, the full contents coverage without an inventory of any kind. Um, but what I am urging the companies to do, um, is to take a reasonable approach to any inventory requirements. That they, that they're putting forth to streamline them as much as possible and to agree to a, a higher percentage than what is in current Colorado law. That it's required to be paid out. So to be clear for folks, um, in current laws, we sit here right now. Your insurance company is required, if you are, if you lost your primary residence, um, your insurance company is required to offer you. At least thirty percent of the, of the coverage for your contents right now as we sit here. Um, if they haven't offered you that, then go to them and tell them that, that you're, that they're required to offer it to you and, and get the check in your hands. What I, what I am urging them to do, the conversations that I'm having is, is, that I'm asking them to agree to pay out something higher than that thirty percent. Um, there's also going to be legislation next, uh, or not next year, this legislative session on that point exactly. Um, and I think that we'll likely see that required thirty percent, at least there's going to be discussions about that required thirty percent to be increased. But Ann, uh, i- if there are issues that you are running into specifically with your insurance company with the inventory requirements. Again, reach out to us and see what we can do to help you. Um, because I know those inventory requirements, they're maddening, candidly. Um, they, they are incredibly frustrating. Um, from my vantage point, some of the detail that the insurance companies require, some of the insurance companies, to be clear, not all of them. A number of insurance companies are paying out at a much higher percentage right off the bat. Um, a number of them are paying out at eighty, ninety, a hundred percent immediately. Um, but I also know that there are some insurance companies that, that require their, their consumers to go through a maddening level of detail. Um, and I, and I don't use that word sparingly. It would drive me absolutely nuts if I had to deal with, with some of the detail that's required. Um, so again, please, if there are issues that you're running into as you get to that inventory, if there's something that doesn't make sense, if there's something that's. Um, incredibly frustrating, please reach out to us and see what we can do to help.
Thank you. Next we have Lori.
Hi.
Hi, very quick question. It's procedural, but I couldn't figure out how to answer, ask it any other way. I am using live transcript because I have an auditory processing disorder. Will the actual tran- written transcript be available to us after the meeting?
We will post a meeting video in its entirety online um after the meeting and then we have a summary of minutes that'll be written.
Okay.
Next, we have Susan Lou. Hi, Susan.
So am I on now?
Yes.
Okay, so um I wonder, Commissioner, if you could speak to the individual insurance payments. If FEMA does debris removal for us. I don't know if you're aware, but what residents or affected residents are being asked to sign a right of entry. And it is a terrible contract, very scary. It asks us to indemnify. So my understanding is. If someone comes on, if the debris remover comes on your property and either injures or kills someone. They're not responsible because you signed away your indemnity right. And then also, um you also sign away your insurance right. Because FEMA will evidently, if this contract goes through. Pay the insurance company directly. One of my concerns is we don't know if FEMA removes, if FEMA does the debris removal, how much it will cost. So if you could just speak to the whole issue of of this right of entry that people are being asked to sign by the county. And it's a pretty short timeline to do it. It's January twenty seventh. You have to opt in by, I'm sorry, January twenty sixth. And that's not a lot of time to figure out exactly what this contract is saying.
Yeah, Susan, so I I think that the the issues that you raised are are issues that are are best to work through with the county and I know that's a that's a frustrating response for me. Because you want actual answers, but I I can't and shouldn't speak for the county. As far as the insurance components of of the of the uh the debris removal process, just in general. We're working with the, we're working, my team is working with the county to work through a lot of a number of different issues and then both the city of Superior and Lewisville. To understand exactly how that process is going to work from the county's perspective and from the individual cities. So there's a number of things that are that are in the works as we sit here right now. I don't have a ton of answers for you. Like I said, I know that's frustrating. I know that's not what anybody wants to hear right now, but I also don't want to tell you something that's that's inaccurate.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Chapman.
Hi, I'm Gary Chapman. I have four fifty seven Murfield. Uh lost my house. My my question is is on additional living expenses. I've been hearing some different things about that. My policy is capped for two years and it has a monetary limit. And I'm just wondering if if that is in in accordance with Colorado insurance law.
So uh there there's two different components to that, Gary. There's the the two-year aspect of it. So in Colorado law, um the the policies are required to have a twelve-month um A L E additional living expense. Coverage and then the insurance companies are required to offer an additional twelve months, so twenty-four months total, which is what you have. The percentage cap, though, is a completely different issue and that is prohibited and we've made that abundantly clear. Percentage or or dollar caps, any caps at all are are prohibited and we've made that abundantly clear to uh the insurance companies. I had a meeting with the companies. On. I don't know, Thursday or Friday, Gary, one of the two. Um and we re- reiterated to them that they, if they're, if they have standard policies, so what ends up happening, unfortunately. Is that insurance companies will have standard policies that they issue throughout the country. Um and those standard policies sometimes don't have everything that reflect the requirements of a particular state's law. We have heard um anecdotally that a a couple of 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 examples, exactly like what's going on with you, Gary. Where a percentage or a dollar cap is in play on that A L E that is prohibited in Colorado. So. If your company is telling you that that is the case, again, file a complaint with us and and we'll take it up with your company.
Thanks.
Thank you. And next we have the phone number ending in eight two two six. There we go. Sherry, go ahead and give it a try. I think we tried unmute. It looks like you're on on the computer and on the phone. I think we've tried unmuting both of your. Devices. And it looks like you might be muted yourself on the phone if that's how you're trying to connect. All right, sorry about that. Um we're just having technical trouble getting you unmuted. And so we'll go on uh to the last comment on insurance tonight, and that's from Lori.
Hi, this is actually a question from my husband Doug's who who was here with me.
So we today, we have Safeco. And they want to, you know, to settle up and make sure that we're we get all our monies for personal property. They've given us fifty percent of our of our claim so far. Personal living, we found a place to live in downtown Louisville. We're working on that, but it's just, I don't understand moving forward about replacement costs for the house. Because they talked about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
We covered this already.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Then then I just, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't around for this, so, okay.
But I do have a question that I will follow up on. Are insurance companies supposed to pay out your entire rebuild costs as soon as possible?
So the the short answer to that question is is no. Um the longer answer. Has to do with the rebuild costs um and the way that the the insurance, your insurance policy. Works um related to actual cash value and replacement cost coverage. I'm happy to get into the into the weeds on that, um folks, if you would like me to, what I would maybe. Point you in the direction of that might be a better use of your time is uh just to watch the the first forty-five minutes of that um that town hall that we had last week. A number of those types of questions uh we went over and we answered, um or you can reach out to us separately and I'm I'm happy to answer. We can walk through those those types of uh those types of issues for you. Separately too, and we can get into the the more detailed question. It sounded like you were. That you were getting into Lori, your husband or was maybe getting into and and don't don't mind. I don't mind repeating myself. I like repeating myself. So if you want to, if you want to answer, if you want to ask that question again, I'm happy to to get back into it, but I didn't hear enough of it to answer it.
Well, and Michael, so our insurance policy from Safe Safeco is sixty-six pages long. And I've read through it multiple times and there's no mention of catastrophic federal emergency. Funding or anything like that. So they said that that's like an addendum that's an invisible link or something. I don't know. But I don't, I have not seen that and I've gone through it now three times. A- and it's it's extremely confusing. So I didn't know what. When they, when they, when I've talked to the insurance adjusters from Safeco, which is Liberty Mutual. They said, well, there's special things that happen when it's declared a, you know, a federal disaster. But I don't know what that means.
So not to speak for them, because I don't know exactly what they what they were responding to, sir, but my guess is. That they're talking about the fact that that um the president has declared this a disaster, which which. Uh initiates a number of different things, including FEMA assistance um and that S B O S B A loan that I talked about. And uh why don't I do this? Wait, so I can include a couple of, or there isn't a chat, is there? There's not a chat. Um but I can get some information to uh to Mayor Stoltzman and and. Councilmember Brown. I'm sure there's a place that we can post things on the um on the city's website. Where you all can go and and get some information directly from us that we that we've put out there. That has links to FEMA for that individual assistance, that thirty-nine thousand dollars roughly. That's not the exact number, but that's the rough number. And also the ability to uh go down the path of getting an S B A loan potentially if you need that S B A loan. We've got links in some of our F A Qs on both of those points and I can get that information out to folks.
So, Michael, that's assuming you're under underinsured, right?
Yes.
Correct. On the S B A loan in particular, the the individual assistance through FEMA, that thirty-nine thousand dollars. There's there's a number of different um use of potential uses for that. So I would encourage you to have some conversations with FEMA uh on along those fronts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so, Michael, Commissioner, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Um there are just a lot of. Questions and so we'll continue to stay in touch and thank you so much. If you do have resources that you want us to post, we have a fire. Web page where we are trying to consolidate all the resources we can for folks. So we'll absolutely get things posted up there. And you can send those to Councilmember Brown and he'll take care of that. Thank you very much um for spending time with us this evening and thank you for continuing to do the town halls and and being very communicative with the community.
Absolutely, folks. Thank you very much for having me. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. And so um thank you all um for segmenting the conversation like that so we could uh use Michael's time while he could join us. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Durbin, um to talk about some other uh Marshall Fire topics. City manager? You're muted.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. Uh that was a good add to the agenda. So what we're prepared to do tonight, we're going to try to be brief so people can, you know, ask. Questions and comments and so forth, but essentially provide some updates on uh what we've been doing, what we are doing and what you can expect to see in the coming, in the near future from us. We are Public Works Director Kirk Cohen will talk a little bit about what's going on in Public Works. Megan Davis will talk about our status with debris removal and Lisa Ritchie will talk about our um. Planning and building initiatives. I'd like to start, though, by first of all. I've only been here a couple weeks and I haven't had the opportunity to.
So sorry to everybody about the technical issues. It looks like we lost the city manager for a moment. We'll give him just another second. Mayor Proton Maloney, will you please text message um the city manager so that he knows that? He's frozen. Thank you.
I did, I uh this is Megan Davis, Deputy City Manager. I did just text him, so I I know he's at City Hall, so um. I will just check in with our I T folks too, but.
I'm also at City Hall.
Okay, so you're and you're here, okay. I texted him so he knows, so we'll see if he needs to jump back on.
And if not. We might.
Time officially, this is Kirk Corr, Public Works Director. I'll just get an update going from my side and when.
Yeah, let me just pause it for one second. I think what the city manager was planning on doing was kind of go over what we've gone through to get to where we are today. Um and then he was going to turn it over into some of these future things. And so I just want to give him like thirty more seconds to come back on. In case he can, and if not, we will just turn it over to the staff members that are on with us to take us through what they're working on now. But it would be nice for him to be able to take us through some of the milestones and obstacles that the staff has worked on. Our city staff. Are tremendous and um when you think about public servants and public service, they have embodied all the things that you would want. In a public servant in the last, well, really always, but really in the last um month, they have done things that are just unbelievable and there are heroics in our staff. And efforts being put in on the community's behalf for the recovery. So I do think the city manager wanted to recognize and celebrate some of that. And um make sure council was aware of some of the. Really vast feats that have been overcome in just a few weeks. But since we still don't have him on, he'll tell us that um secondarily. And so we'll turn it over to our Public Works Director Kirk Corr to take us through um the utility side of things and what he's working on right now. Director Corr?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Kirk Corr, Director of Public Works and Utilities. So the uh our department right now, we are still focused on bringing the water supply. Completely online to all residents. Currently, we have roughly around eighty-five residents that are in the burn areas and near the burn areas where we have isolated our main lines. And so we're working with the Health Department and uh sampling teams to make sure we have good. Testing of water around chlorine, bacteria and V O Cs in that area. To make sure those results support opening water back up to those homes safely. Uh that will continue over the next week or two. And we will be starting to reach out to individual homeowners as soon as tomorrow to do individual sampling. So that is still a large ongoing effort that's going on. We also have teams that are doing citywide assessments of the public infrastructure. And some of the private infrastructure such as retaining walls just for. Structural safety and to make sure there's no immediate threats to anything out there. And that will be ongoing for several weeks and then we'll be coinciding with the FEMA process. And associated FEMA reporting to to work to get city um. Cost reimbursement on this area of the disaster. Those are the big efforts for Public Works and Utilities and I'll be happy to hand off to the next department.
Or me.
Oh, good. I was gonna say, let's take it out. Okay, great.
Or me, um not Ashley, Mayor Stoltzman, it's Jeff Durbin here. Sorry about that. My computer, I don't know what happened. I can't get back in, so I. Ran downstairs. I'm embarrassed and I'm sorry about that delay. Thanks for stalling for me, Kurt. So what I was starting to say is I've been here two weeks. And I've had the opportunity to see city staff perform at their highest level. They have been working so hard. Diligently to do everything they can to help Louisville recover. I'm really proud to be part of this team and especially proud of the work that they have done. Want to talk about some milestones. The the very early state and federal disaster declarations. That happened earlier than I have ever heard of before. FEMA and Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management were amazed at how quickly that happened. Also, that also led us down a road to where the state is covering half of the FEMA uh local cost share. Which is twenty-five percent. This is for public infrastructure um and a hundred percent of state expenses. That's a really big deal for us in terms of getting our infrastructure back in place. The multi-jurisdictional support that we've received from other agencies has been truly remarkable. We couldn't have done what we did as far as manning all the the access control points, keeping our water system viable, et cetera, without the support we receive from other entities. The state and federal agencies. What Kurt and his team have done with the water system has been um almost miraculous. So um I think you already talked about that. The um we stood up the Disaster Assistance Center. Very promptly and in a great facility and it's been a great resource for the community. We had the table over there, um the time invested in, you know, pre-planning for that facility really paid dividends and getting that up and running. And um the number of people that are over there on a daily basis. Shows you how much support people need, but it also shows you what a great facility that is as far as providing those resources. The placard system that Chief Hayes put in place as far as providing for re-entry into these neighborhoods and providing access control points to provide. Property owners an opportunity to um. Get in there without a lot of general public in their way, uh keeping the public safe as far as keeping them out of these hazardous zones with sharp pointing objects. And and so forth has been, I think, um a a good thing and it's a good success, I would say. Our communication efforts with the city, we really ramped up our communication efforts. This has given us an opportunity to really work hard on coordinating all our different communication efforts. And get out the word and there's an immense amount of information. On our website on the Marshall Fire page, it's not enough. We don't have all the answers to everything yet. We continue to work hard on that. The call center, we stood up a call center in parallel track to the uh the county call center. The volume that Meredith and her team have been uh the one with calls that they've been receiving, um it ebbs and flows. But I think it's been a good way for people to get information without necessarily having to go to the the D A C or try to figure out on the um on our website. Last week, we hosted a. Last week, we hosted a series of neighborhood listening meetings. We hope to do more of those. Uh, it was a good chance for people to come together. Everyone that attended, I want to thank for that because we heard a lot of questions. We heard where we're coming from. It gave us really an opportunity to dial in some of our work to better address, you know, concerns and challenges that people were facing in the community. We really do want residents from Louisville, Louisville back here, um, expeditiously and we're working hard on that. Um, to that point with the call center, um, and, um, other work we're doing at the DAC, we have contact information for most of those folks who are fire impacted. So we've been able to reach out directly with direct communications to people, um, and get that information to you, um, directly, which I think has been helpful. If you're listening to this and haven't provided that information yet, please do, because that's a great tool for us. Um, uh, we set up a G I S data collection system. It's basically a mapping, um, platform where we're tracking all of the damage assessments, all the the property damage, worst or smoke damage, all these things, which is a great tool for us going forward. Um, Excel, we've worked with our partners at the state to, um, to have Excel do some things that they've never done before. Hundreds of streetlights, which are owned by Excel, were damaged. Excel is moving towards, um, replacing them at their cost, which is great for us. Um, and they're also working on system upgrades to accommodate any additional, you know, power needs that people are going to be looking for as they as they rebuild. Just a few more. Um, we're almost complete with damage, uh, assessments and public infrastructure assessments. We've heard directly from the state and FEMA folks that we are months and months ahead of where anybody they've seen in this process, um, before. So that's, that's a, that's a sign of how hard our staff has been working um, on on this work to get us down that road. We have been collaborating with Superior and the county, and I think that's really helped there too. Debris removal phase one is complete. That's the dumpster for spoiled food. Phase two is ongoing. And, um, you know, we had an IGA in place with Superior and Boulder County on, I think it was December thirty-first. Uh, just to move this, move this along, which I think is, um, again, a sign of how hard we've been working to 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 address these problems. Today, I think it was today, uh, we brought a recovery manager on board, which is going to help us move, um, a lot of our work forward. And, um, and then the last piece, I guess, is that we're working to, um, continue to move our capital projects forward this year. We will have to make some adjustments in workload. Uh, but I do anticipate that we'll be able to do, um, you know, the the majority, I would say, of our capital projects that we had in our work plan, um, but we'll be working through, um, prioritization in the in the near coming weeks, I'll say. Um, so all that said, um, I think Kurt's already covered public work.
So if we could just pause for one second, it looks like some council members have questions on the topics that have been covered so far. And so, um, just remember that there's more information staff that's going to present. Um, but if council members have questions to this point, they can go ahead and ask them. Councilmember Lake?
Yes, uh, City Manager Durbin, I guess the the question I'd gotten the question and I think it might be useful for, um, the broader public to hear, um, from somebody who is still waiting for their water to be turned on and, uh, you know, those folks have been waiting and have been patient, but it's hard not to have water. Um, we all can imagine that and it's difficult, but he, she asked, uh, she thought that the the testing was sort of instantaneous and why is, why is it, uh, taking so long to do that? And I actually, maybe, uh, Director Corr, it's probably the better person to answer that. Maybe talk about exactly what's involved in that kind of testing.
Yeah, that's not instant test, but Kurt, are you still on? Can you address that one?
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. The, uh, test that takes the longest is the VOCs and that takes twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And so, um, we have to coordinate carefully opening up the isolated areas so that we don't contaminate the main system. Then we take that test and then we have to wait forty-eight hours. And so it's just, uh, it's a slow methodical process. And if we get it wrong, it could, um, encapsulate us having to shut down the entire system again if we think we possibly contaminate the main system. So that's why it feels slow. And, um, the way the health department views it, we also have to isolate each home within the burn area from the main line. So we had to take time to isolate each home and then slowly open up these main lines and test them. And, um, and then I said, I said earlier, we're going to start contacting these homes individually to go back to test each home individually and then clear them to come back onto the main line as we clear the main line. So it is, it is a long methodical process and, uh, it is not instantaneous testing.
Thank you. And so I don't see other council members with questions. So City Manager Durbin, if you want to turn it over to the other directors for their updates.
Yeah, Deputy City Manager Megan Davis is prepared to talk a bit about our debris removal work.
Thank you, City Manager Durbin. Um, I am just going to give you kind of an update and overview of the debris management process. Uh, as you all are aware, the city is partnering with Boulder County and the town of Superior on debris removal across the entire burn area. Um, we, we are in a three-phase process right now and we're currently in phase two of this process, which includes the right-of-way debris removal, which includes things like cars and other large items that are in the road right-of-way. This will also include curbside collection of smoke and wind damaged materials from non-fire damaged properties. Um, and that'll be pickup options for people to be able to, um, bring out kind of soft goods, other items that were damaged, um, or destroyed during the process. During the phase two work, um, we're also working with Superior Boulder County, um, together on hydro, the application of hydro mulching across the burn area. And this will help stabilize the soil and mitigate ash that might be carried by wind or stormwater. Um, this will help prevent source control, um, and really focus on stormwater and air quality protection measures. Um, as we move forward, there's, there's still some snow on the ground, but as we know, um, winds may pick up, uh, we may get, you know, rain, other weather. And so this is a really critical part of phase two. Phase three will be the debris removal on private properties and this will be the debris that will be removed from destroyed homes in the burn area. Boulder County is managing the debris removal process, including the contract for the debris removal and the reimbursement process with FEMA. However, city staff is engaged in planning for these efforts and, um, really working to make sure that we're understanding the concerns that we're hearing about residents and some of the issues that are coming up and working to understand how we can address those needs through the contracting process as we move into phase three. Um, understand the sequencing desires and issues, the timing issues that we've heard from residents and how to, um, move this process forward as quickly and efficiently and safely as we possibly can together with the other communities. So in order to facilitate the work of the phase three debris, debris removal across the private properties, um, residents are being asked to complete the right-of-entry form to opt in or opt out of the coordinated debris removal process. So any resident whose home was severely destroyed or damaged should complete the right-of-entry form, even if you would like to opt out of the coordinated debris debris removal. That form can be completed at the Disaster Assistance Center or it can be completed online through the Boulder County Debris Removal webpage. If you go to the Boulder County webpage, um, there's a banner, you can click on, click on the Marshall Fire and go to the debris removal. There's debris removal FAQs with a lot of information that might be helpful. And also you can click on the form and you can complete it digitally or you can print it, you can email it in. There are a number of different ways you can submit that form. Um, so we are really encouraging people to complete that form. As of now, eight hundred and sixty-one forms have been completed across all communities. Uh, with four hundred and fifty-one completed in the city of Louisville. Twenty-four people have formally opted out across all communities with eleven opt-outs for the city of Louisville. And if residents have not completed this document, please do so before the deadline on January twenty-sixth. And this, uh, debris removal does include a requirement for homeowners to sign over only the amount in their policy allocated for debris removal if they have any, with FEMA and Boulder County covering the difference of the cleanup costs if that exceeds your insurance coverage. If a property owner opts out and would like to do it on their own, they would then be required to conduct structural ash and soil cleanup work. And they would not be able to participate in the coordinated debris removal program. Um, there's information in that same FAQs that gives more details about what the local and state permitting requirements and federal regulations are for individual homeowners who want to do their own debris removal. So we don't have all the details of the timing on phase three. We know that's something that's really, um, important to the community. So we'll share information as we get that information as it becomes available. We're really moving to, we're working to move it forward, um, as quickly as we can, as I mentioned, and, um, we also are, are, um, you know, really focused on ensuring that there's, um, equity among the debris removal process and that cleanup efforts are kind of distributed across the communities, recognizing that all the communities are really eager to get this work done um, for public safety reasons and also for moving forward with the building process. Again, I mentioned the Boulder County FAQs. We'd encourage you to, um, to look at that resource. Also, there will be, uh, a meeting on Thursday evening that Boulder County will be holding that is specific to the debris removal, um, questions and issues. And that'll be for all the communities participating and it begins at six P M. It's a virtual town hall and so we invite anyone to participate in that meeting if you have more questions about the debris debris removal process. There's also a call, a call number and that number is, um, at Boulder County. And, um, I'm just looking to pull that up, but it's three zero three two one four three two zero three. So if residents have specific questions about debris removal, uh, most current information can be found through that hotline. I would also note that at that FAQ site that I mentioned, there's a link to a map that shows the most recent information about the status of the phases of debris removal. For example, if you look at it today, you can see the progress of the right-of-way cleanup. It's a map that shows exactly which neighborhoods have completed right-of-way cleanup, which neighborhoods are in process and, um, which neighborhoods are still pending. So there's a lot of great information. So you can kind of understand where this process is at. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And so we'll turn it back to the city manager if there are other folks for updates.
Yeah, if there's no questions there, uh, last, um, interim planning director Lisa Ritchie, um, had some updates on building and planning work.
Good afternoon or sorry, good evening, everyone. Um, Lisa Ritchie, interim planning and building safety director. Um, so just let me pull up my notes here. So yeah, as City Manager Durbin, uh, mentioned, you know, we've been hard at work trying to figure out the best and most efficient ways that we can kind of staff up to accommodate reconstruction, reconstruction permits so that we can expedite permitting processes for affected families, um, as well as continue to refine our process to streamline them. We're also working to facilitate coordinated home reconstruction to maximize the inherent efficiencies that exist through that path. Um, so more specifically, you know, some of the things that we're working on. Um, so we understand that there's a lot of conversations within the community around the recently adopted energy codes, um, and those conversations are coming from multiple perspectives. So just from our department's, um, perspective, we're working diligently with our own staff, um, city consultants and other professionals, uh, to provide more information to facilitate, um, any decision-making at the city council level. We are aiming for a discussion with city council on this on February first. So we'll have more information on cost estimates and kind of the range of options, um, and the practicalities, um, around those, hopefully at our next city council meeting. In addition to the building codes we have in place, there's also additional codes within the twenty-twenty-one International Wildland Urban Interface Code, W O E is kind of the acronym that gets placed around that term. Um, and those codes can help protect protect structures from fire damage. Uh, so these codes include provisions around building materials, ventilation and roof systems, defensible space and landscaping. So we're currently evaluating building performance during the Marshall Fire to understand how different building materials performed. Um, and we can present a recommendation at a future meeting. Not sure if that'll be on February first or shortly thereafter. Um, additionally, we are aware that over the years, um, that there's been multiple interpretations of how zoning and yard and bulk standards have been applied through our residential neighborhoods with planned unit developments as well as our planned community, planned community zone, district zone. So we have some gaps in our code for certain yard and bulk standards. So right now we're analyzing the effects of the differing applications of the code over the years. We're identifying these gaps that result in challenges for redevelopment. So we're targeting February fifteenth for a presentation of an ordinance that identifies solutions to allow reasonable and consistent redevelopment within the affected neighborhoods. So stay tuned for that. Um, additionally, we are currently reviewing options for recovery planning at the neighborhood level. So, um, right now we think this is going to include facilitated discussions with professionals who specialize in recovery work uh, to bring neighborhoods together to make decisions around neighborhood design, contractor builder selection, partnership on costs, things like that. So we'll have more information to share around this in the next week or so. So those are kind of the high-level things we're working on and and happy to take any questions if you have them.
Any council members have questions for interim planning director? Thank you. I know we'll all have a lot of questions when those different conversations come forward. So thank you for working through, coming up with the information. We need to have those discussions at the appropriate time. City Manager Durbin?
That's all we have for our staff update at this point. I think I would like to suggest giving you back access to your laptop and I'll run upstairs and reboot my computer and get back on some or other.
I'm on, you can just sit back down. I have it all going. We just have to switch names.
Oh, you're back. Oh, I'm back online. Thank you.
Yeah, this is your computer.
Um.
Come upstairs. That's perfect. And then I'll go back down.
Okay, thank you.
Council members and just leave that exactly where it is. Um, council members have any other questions for staff on this presentation this evening? All right. So I'll turn it over to the public for public comment. And I just, um, remind everybody that we won't, um, go back and forth like we did as the exception to the rule during the division of insurance. This is really your time to tell us what you have to tell us and ask questions. And then our staff will take down notes on all of the questions that are brought up and we'll work to answer them over the coming um, days and weeks and and resolve the issues that you all bring forward. But this is really your time to tell us what you'd like to tell us. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Um, if you would like to run downstairs.
I was gonna ask if you will facilitate. Thank you very much.
I will. All right. So we're going to go to public comments. Uh, you have three minutes. And as the mayor said, um, this is your opportunity to tell us uh, what's on your mind. So the first person is Dan.
This is actually Dan and Erica Brambridge, nine sixty-six, Rapa Ho Circle. Um, earlier, Devin, Megan Davis was talking about that right-of-entry. Um, and you heard Susan Lu express some concerns about the language in that right-of-entry, um, document that we have to sign in order, we are very interested in help with the debris removal. But it's concerning as a resident to take on the liability if anybody gets hurt and having to cover um, that liability. Is there anything that you all can do to help us either edit that language or put in, um, addendums that might protect us in that process?
Thank you very much for that comment. And like I said on the onset, we'll take down all of these suggestions and comments and feedback and work toward resolving them in the coming weeks. So next up we have Dan.
That was.
Next is.
Next, we have Paul. Thank you. Paul, you might be muted on your end. We're not hearing.
Does appear to be unmuted. Yeah.
It, sometimes this happens when the microphone doesn't have permissions on the Zoom platform. Sometimes this happens when the microphone doesn't have permissions on the Zoom platform. Some people have found success logging off and logging back in. Also, we have a phone number posted that you can dial to get a hold of us, and I'm just so sorry for this technical issue. If I see your name pop back up, I will call on you again. Next, we have Larry Donner. Hi Larry.
There, hello, thank you. My name is Larry Donner. I lived at ten twenty Willow Place. I'm now temporarily housed in Westminster. I'd just like to ask council to consider exempting the fire victims from the 2021 net zero codes. If those people choose to rebuild their their former homes in Louisville. My concern is. That we we need to do anything we can to keep the cost down because. I don't want to lose my neighbors and many of these neighbors are people with young families and I'm concerned they're not going to be able to afford. To build back in Louisville. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Nancy Dappo.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
All right, sorry. Hi, this is Nancy Devoo. I had two houses, one at a thousand three Turnberry Circle and one at nine nineteen St. Andrews Lane. Both both are completely burned and. I had previously asked for consideration also on the IECC. Net zero, and I'd like to follow up on that. And my question to you is, what is the criteria necessary? For the city of Louisville to not require net zero? And if you do require net zero. How would you recommend homeowners actually comply with it? Because it's my understanding, because we did a solar panel study on our houses last summer. To see what it would take. And solar panels would only give us seventeen to thirty percent reduction in our power usage. So I, even if I think I filled my every square inch of my property, so I can't even step on my lawn. I still couldn't make enough power, right, to be net zero. So I'm just trying to figure out, like, what's the criteria again? For the city of Louisville to not require this, and if you do require it, how are we actually supposed to comply with something? This seems fairly impossible.
Thank you. Next, we have Brett Moore.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. My wife and I lost our home of twenty-eight years at ten thirteen Arapahoe Circle to the Marshall Fire. We raised our family and children in Louisville and have grown to cherish our town and our neighbors, many of whom also lost their homes. Like many of our neighbors, we're trying to find a way to recover from this disaster and to rebuild and remain in Louisville. We're now faced with some incredible challenges that include historically high building costs in Boulder County. That existed prior to the fire. An unprecedented inflationary climate, as well as a significant uncertainty. Around the extra cost of rebuilding that might be imposed by conforming. To the new Louisville building code that was passed less than two months ago. None of us, including all of you on council, have a realistic and concrete sense of how much those new code changes will increase the cost of rebuilding. In our devastated neighborhoods. Absent that time of concrete information, our ability to make reasoned determinations of if and how we can afford to rebuild is impossible. Members of our neighborhood, and I live at Arapahoe Circle. Have met on numerous occasions to discuss our situation, and most of us are asking for the following action from council. For victims of the fire who choose to rebuild only. Allow them to rebuild to the code that existed prior to November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. We're not asking that the current building code be suspended. What would be the consequences of council acting thusly? The homes rebuilt to the previous code that was shaped by the IECC twenty eighteen standards would be among the most sustainable and energy efficient homes. Currently existing in Louisville. The cost of rebuilding will likely be reduced, which may in turn allow more of our community to rebuild and remain in our community. The uncertainty of the cost consequences of the new code would be removed. Council would demonstrate through actions rather than just words. Some compassion and humanity toward the victims of the fire. Council would also be able to sustain the newly passed code for those who make the choice to rebuild or remodel. Rather than imposing it on those of us who have been forced to rebuild because of a disaster. In closing, for those on council who have not lost homes. Despite your best intentions and wishes, you have no idea what the victims of the fire are going through. I wouldn't wish that on any of you. Council is now presented with the opportunity to demonstrate real leadership and to do so with compassion. Act on our requests and allow us the clarity we need to move forward and to rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have RJ Harrington.
Thank you, neighbors. RJ Harrington, four five seven East Rain Tree Court. My comment will be based not only on the superhuman efforts that staff and council have exhibited. To date since this disaster. But also the superhuman efforts that are going to be occurring over the next several weeks. Most especially in relation to some previous comments. But also to what interim director Ritchie presented. The fact that you all, with support of numerous professionals. Consultants. Lisa Ritchie referenced. To really codify what in fact the numbers will be. To help our community rebuild to a stronger code. I do have compassion. I have survivor's guilt. Our family's home was preserved. And so. We are all suffering trauma, certainly not to the degree that our neighbors are suffering. That lost everything. And frankly, I think I would try to take some people's places if I could. So mainly thank you again and again and again and again. But especially because the efforts that will be placed. In determining what impact these new codes may or may not have on reconstruction. Will be clarified and codified in the coming weeks, and there will be frank, open and honest policy discussions. At future council meetings that I hope all of our neighbors will be able to participate in. Once we have the facts in our hands. Thanks again.
Thank you. Next, we have Kendra Stockerbrand.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you. My name is Kendra Stockerbrand. My husband Paul is here beside me. Eight two four Trail Ridge. We did lose our home in the Marshall Fire. I have three questions related to debris removal. And we have looked at the Boulder County debris removal webpage. We have called into the phone number and spoke with who was answering questions there. We participated last Tuesday on a broader communication. So we're trying to gather information, but what we cannot determine. What we would like more information on, three things. One is. Detailed schedule. So we would like more information, more transparency about the phase three plan. The timeframe of six to eighteen months, that eighteen months is enough to make us take our breath away. So we would very much like to have more information. I'll be transparent and say we have not submitted. The opt-in or opt-out yet because we don't have enough information. Second line item that I'm need more information on and that we called in to Boulder County on is. We have significant landscaping boulders that are. Over two foot in diameter. I'm gonna guess over tens of thousands of dollars in in boulders. It's not clear to me how that will be handled by the FEMA approach when they talk about impacted. Landscaping and removing so much topsoil. It's not clear to me. I need that information to make a decision. Thirdly, I'd like more information about the permitting, I'll say priority. I, my takeaway from the phone call last Tuesday was that there was a bit of a. Hate to use the word threat, but it was kind of a veiled threat about the prioritization of permits and noting. Those that decide to opt out of the debris removal, that that could impact the permitting for debris removal. And for building permitting. So I would like to have a clear statement on how that. Prioritization and how that participation will impact building permits. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the questions tonight. All really good questions from community members and comments. Any other community members care to make any comments on the fire topic? That we're discussing this evening. And I'm looking to see if Paul was able to log back in to see if we can unmute. Not seeing it. Paul, if you were able to get back on. If you raise your hand again, we can try to call on you again. Next, we have Kate McCoy. Kate's gonna need to unmute on her end.
Hi, thank you. I'm concerned about the price gouging that is going on in Louisville area, specifically Louisville. We went to look at a house today to rent. It was ten thousand dollars per month. And it was smaller than our home on Arapahoe Circle where we lived for thirty-one years. I'm wondering how that's going to affect everyone's insurance policies moving into the future. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. And then Kendra, I can only call on each person once, but I think you may have a comment about Paul. So if we could just unmute Kendra again.
Yes, thank you. Paul is here beside me. A little technical difficulty, so I'm gonna hand it over to him.
Thank you.
In general comment in a letter that's been written, so you do have this in writing in your email. But our home at eight two four Trail Ridge Drive was destroyed on December thirtieth by no action of ours. Losing what was considered to be one of the premier custom homes on Trail Ridge. We purchased our home in two thousand four, stretching ourselves to buy into a community. That we felt would be best for our children to grow in and for us to create a home that would always be here for family and friends. We did succeed at accomplishing that goal. We put a lot into our home, improving the value, replacing appliances, renovations, hot water heater. And in the last four months, installed a high efficiency HVAC system. All lost on the thirtieth. Those costs are real and are a challenge. Considering the economic impacts to us over the past last two years through industry turn downs and COVID nineteen. Beyond the loss of the home, we have lost everything we own. Treasures from being an expat artwork, children, clothing, furniture. A great deck that was enjoyed by many, the classic sixty-six Impala convertible, which is so much. And so much are all now gone. By no action of ours, we're not okay. As we deal with this grief and pain, we are finding strength to work with our insurance company. We felt like we were prepared and. Prepared for what was deemed to be good coverage for our area. Our insurance coverage is better than others. However, rebuild expenses will be, will. Will be increased due to the idealistic net zero code. Is causing major stress in a moment where it is not necessary and not helpful. I've attached a letter to that was sent to Senator Warren. Addressing climate initiatives, you might find interesting. Those that'll be in your inbox, and I won't address that here. Please suspend the twenty twenty-one IECC net zero requirements for residential rebuilds. And for those affected by the fire. The code is penalizing people in our community who have already lost everything. Please swiftly act. To assure them that Louisville is trying to help by enabling rapid permitting to repair their lives and get them back into their homes. Codes should address the construction of safe dwellings for the community. And was in reason to address the overall community that made this town rated number one earlier. These homes over over five hundred and fifty were taken from us by actions by others and not by choice. We should not be required to adhere to a standard that our neighbors' houses in Louisville are not. Please help us rebuild this community swiftly and without the added stress and without owners nearly doubling our household debt.
Thank you. And just last call for folks who want to make comments this evening on the topic of Marshall Fire. Thank you all for all your good written comments and all the emails. Those also come to council and are entered into the record and is a very productive way to give us your feedback. So thank you to everybody who submitted questions verbally and for everybody who took the time to write in or verbally testify tonight. And so with that, I'll turn it back to council members to see if there are any other questions or comments on this topic. Seeing then we'll just close this topic out by thanking, on behalf of the entire community, I just want to thank the city staff for working so hard. They are putting in a tremendous amount of time and service for the community in lining up the appropriate resources. Sometimes the city is not the governmental entity that provides a service or resource, but that has not stopped our staff from working to coordinate. And align the resources that community members need. And I've been very impressed that, you know, rather than saying, oh, we don't, you know, we're not responsible for reverse nine one one. They're stepping up to the table and saying, we need to investigate this, we need to understand, we need to find the right services. And that's just one example. I mean, it's with all the way across the board. Our staff members are providing a tremendous amount of public service for the community at this time. And I just, on behalf of everyone, want to thank you all very much for all of your service. And so that closes that topic out, and it brings us to another important and related topic, which is ordinance number eighteen twenty-three, series twenty twenty-two. An emergency ordinance temporarily suspending certain provisions of the Louisville Municipal Code regarding utility charges. And authorizing the finance director to write off utility bill balances for structures damaged or destroyed by the Marshall Fire. This is our first and final reading and public hearing as this is an adoption of an emergency ordinance. So I'll open the public hearing. And ask if there are any disclosures for council members to make. I think this obviously impacts everyone in the community because of how we're handling it. So we all are residents of the community. Some impacted more or less directly by the fire, so we'll just enter that sort of obvious statement into the record. And I'll ask our city attorney and council member Fahey.
I'm just, thank you, mayor. I just want to question if I have to do any specific recusal or anything.
No, I think what I stated makes the record clear enough, but if you would like to state for the record the position that you're in, you're welcome to. But I think the statement I made should cover everybody. Just to make it clear on the record that we all have, obviously, in many cases in local government, we all have some kind of stake in a decision that's made, right? And so if you'd like to make a comment, you're welcome to, council member Fahey.
I would just like to state that I did lose my home in the fire, and so I will be one of the people benefiting if this happens. But I don't think that that will impact my ability to make a decision on this topic.
And just just for other folks watching and sort of like the theory and thought behind this, council member Fahey is not uniquely situated, unfortunately. She's very similarly situated to many people in the community, and so she's not making a decision that's unique to her circumstance. Which is very unfortunate. I'm very sorry. And so with that, I'll ask to the attorney Kelly if she'd like to make any comments in a presentation. City attorney Kelly?
Sure, thank you, mayor. And that was a great explanation of why council member Fahey does not have a conflict. I agree with everything you just said. And I'll be briefed. As we all know, almost six hundred homes were damaged or destroyed in the Marshall Fire. And one of the impacts of the fire has been on the city's water system and water delivery to its customers. This ordinance comes to you at the request of the finance department and the city manager's office. And essentially, the ordinance will give the finance department and the city's public works department. The time that it needs to determine which and identify which of those properties have been destroyed. Or have been damaged to the point where they're not habitable and are currently not. Being occupied. And it will provide some relief to all customers during the thirty day period that the ordinance would temporarily suspend. city utility billings to allow staff to, to make those determinations so that when the billings go back online, we don't place all of our customers in arrears because we didn't send them a utility bill. So the city utilities that would be suspended are for not just water, but also wastewater, stormwater and trash and recycling, because all of those are billed in one bill to the customer. And there are certain billing cycles that are triggered by meter reading dates. And the ordinance would also provide the city's finance director the authority to make some departmental rules and regulations on how to implement this so that, you know, each customer receives that thirty day period. They might not be identical periods because of meter read and billing dates. But the intent of the ordinance is to have a thirty day pause in, in all of the utility billings to allow staff to sort through, you know, which homes will not be reserving, receiving services for a while and then put you know, back online bills to those customers who are still occupying their homes.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly for that. And I just want to thank the staff for bringing this to us swiftly. And it's an emergency ordinance to give the staff the time to work out the details of the program. There are many complexities. For example, all customers were without drinkable water. So there'll have to be some discussion in detail around that period of the billing and use. And there are still customers that have homes that are without water. So there'll be discussion and determination around those customers. And there are just many details to be determined and, and analyzed and programmed to be developed. So I want to thank the staff for working through all that deliberately. And then making sure that we write off the accounts for the homes that were destroyed. And if you read through the ordinance, I really appreciate the staff working to identify that the general fund will be responsible for those burdens so that we don't put our utility fund at any kind of risk through this process. So thank you to the staff for moving so quickly and continuing to work through these many issues. Council members have questions and comments? Council member Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, I know some people have been confused by damaged and destroyed wording. So, you know, if, if, if homes will qualify, if they've had like extensive smoke damage, just trying to figure out, you know, which homes are going to qualify for, you know, how much did they have to be gone for a certain amount of time? And those things, I certainly know people that didn't consider their homes damaged. Because the fire didn't reach their home, but they realized they're going to be out of their home for two or three months because it's so damaged by the smoke that they're redefining their understanding of the word damaged. So just going to make sure, Mayor, go ahead.
It's possible. We don't know the answer to every question council may have tonight. And just if you look through how we've written the ordinance, we're giving staff some bandwidth to answer some of these complicated questions. But I'll turn it over to the city manager and the finance department to, to answer to the best of our ability at this time.
Yeah. Yeah, Kevin can get into the details on this, but I think it's, this is about doing what's right. That's our starting point. So Kevin, do you want to add any thoughts?
Uh, yes, uh, just real quick, we, we have two lists that we received from the billing department and the city clerk. One is the damaged list and one is the destroyed list. We've written up all the balances for both lists because we are unable to determine, you know, what's inhabitable and what's habitable, those types of things. As we move forward into the next cycle and into February, we'll be adjusting that database as we learn more about it. So we'll get, we're not going to be perfect, but we'll get closer and closer to perfect as we go along. So I hope that answers the question.
Council Dickinson?
Yeah, I think that's great. And I'm sure there's a way for people to, you know, give feedback if, if they don't feel like they were connected with properly. So I'm sure there'll be avenues for people to kind of communicate that. And just making sure people know that, that damage doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, you have fire damage.
Thank you, Council Member Dickinson. And so for everybody, if there are questions people receive on this and people have concerns or questions, please, we'll send them to the utility department to get it sorted out. And so that's the important news there. Council Member Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask the city manager and perhaps Kevin or Kurt. Just so that I understand the, the ordinance, this, this ordinance sus- will suspend billing for a month. It will also, it also forgives the balance for anyone, any outstanding balance for anyone whose home was destroyed or deemed dam- damaged or destroyed. And then it will, and it continues, like they're not going to continue to get utility bills after that, right? The discharged means no longer charged, I guess.
Yes, that's correct. They're going to get, uh, everybody's going to get a bill in January that will say zero. Or it might have some credits or whatever, but after that, all the damaged or destroyed properties will not receive any bill. They'll, they'll get one more and then that'll be it. They'll be taken off the, off our database. They'll be inactivated, basically.
Just clarify, just that's for destroyed properties, just to clarify for anybody listening.
For the destroyed properties, but everyone in the city will get a zero dollar bill for the month of January. Is that correct? Director Watson, or did I, did I make this, misunderstand what you just said?
Yes, they'll get a zero dollar bill for January. Now, the homes that are not on the damaged or destroyed list may have, may have a, you know, a, a past balance or something like that that has not been suspended. Okay.
Got it. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you. Council Member Most?
Okay, just to clarify, sorry. So you said the houses that are destroyed are going to be discharged, right? So they just won't get any more billing. What about houses that are damaged or uninhabitable some, for some period of time? How is that going to be handled?
Like I said, we only have two lists and we don't have, we don't know which are, you know, slightly damaged and which are majorly damaged. So what we did is we decided to do what's right. And we, we took away all the past due balances for everybody on both lists, the damaged and the destroyed list.
Okay, but what about going forward? That's what I'm saying, like the, the houses that are gone, obviously we're not billing them anymore, right? But there are houses that people that are currently uninhabitable that will become most of which I'm assuming will become habitable at some point. So like if you can't live in your house now, are we going to continue to charge utilities even if that house is uninhabitable?
Uh, no, what we'll do is we'll, we'll, right, we won't do that. But as we get more information, as we see water consumption return to some of these minorly damaged homes and stuff like that, then we will reinstate them to the utility bill. Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
So it looks like City Attorney Kelly may want to weigh in or make some comments.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Director Watson made the comment that I raised my hand for.
Thank you. Council Member Brown, and then we'll turn it to the public for some comments.
Oh, right. We have public comment. Sorry about that, Mayor. Yeah, I'll lower my hand at this point.
I had a feeling what you were going to say. So that's why I said what I said. Any members of the public care to comment on the agenda item this evening? RJ Harrington?
Hey, Council, neighbors, RJ Harrington, four, five, seven, East Rain Tree Court. Comment, fully approve. This is a incredible example of this council and this staff in action to support our neighbors who have lost everything. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this topic? Kate McCoy. Hi, Kate. And you might be muted on your side.
I'm curious about Excel Energy. I just got our bill for December that went through December to January fourth. Do I contact them directly and say I want a credit for those days I didn't have a home?
Thank you. And that's all the public comment at this point. So I'll take it back over for council discussion on this topic. And this topic is not about Excel Energy, but I'll just say as a sort of general public service announcement that any, any problems with your Excel bill, you will need to contact Excel directly. The city staff have been in contact with them and council members have been in contact with them and they, Excel has agreed to automatically end people's accounts. But you'll need to contact them if there are issues with the way that the bills have been ended directly. So we can't speak on their behalf. Council discussion on the agenda item that's at hand this evening, Mayor Proton Maloney?
Um, I'll defer to Council Brown to hand up before me.
Council Member Brown?
I'm, I'm just going to move the ordinance, I'm going to move ordinance eighteen twenty-three, series twenty twenty-two.
And any other council discussion before we take our second round of public comment? Council member Lay?
Actually, I'll wait for the second round of comment.
Okay. And so with that, we'll take it to our final. So with every ordinance, just so members of the community are clear as what we're doing for every ordinance, we allow two rounds of public comment. So this is your second and final round of public comment on this ordinance, if any members of the public would care to comment on it this evening. Seeing then, I'll take it back to city council. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? The motion is to approve ordinance number eighteen twenty-three, series twenty twenty-two as an emergency ordinance. Mayor Proton Maloney?
I'm absolutely going to vote for this. I, I appreciate the staff taking the initiative to bring this to us. It is absolutely the right thing to do. So looking forward to saying yes.
Council Member Lay?
One of the things I wanted to highlight and I is what the city manager said about doing the right thing. He said very early on that he was going to try to do that whenever possible during this disaster. And this is one of those measures that I think embodies it. So let's do the right thing. I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you, Council Member Fahey.
I would just like to reiterate that. I think it's a wonderful thing to do and it's greatly appreciated by me and I'm sure by everyone else who will be impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank the finance department. We are putting in another additional burden on the finance staff to develop a program and get it implemented in a very short timeframe. And just, it's very impressive how they've brought this forward so that they have the legal authority to do it. That they've looked at our balances to understand that we have the financial ability to cover this and that we will put ourselves in a fiscally responsible position in our fund by working through the details and making sure it's covered in the appropriate way with non-encumbered resources. So I'm just really impressed with the finance department and I want to recognize that we recognize this creates more additional work for you down the road to figure out all those complicated details for every different account and answering all those questions. And it just, it does mean a lot to the community and it is really important. So thank you for that added workload and for working through this for our community. Any other comments on the ordinance? Seeing then I'll close the public hearing and I will ask the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Council Member Fahey?
Yes.
Council Member Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Council Member Most?
Yes.
Council Member Dickinson?
Yes.
Council Member Lay?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And that takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. And just thank you also for all the work your office has been putting in on the disaster. You were included in all those comments about staff. I hope you know that. Council Member Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wondered whether seventy people still on the call. Every morning at nine thirty, there's a city manager report to counselors. It's a, it's a briefing that is so valuable to us. We learn kind of what happened yesterday and what's teed up for today. It's very brief, brief briefing from, from nine thirty to ten. And there is no time for public comment, but it does allow you to sort of be in the room where it happens and kind of hear the, the news of the day. Council doesn't give any direction or anything like that, but it's just, it's just an update, but I, I find it informative every day. And so feel free to join that. It's not as extensive as this. But it kind of gives you just that daily update of, of what, what the minutia is. So please join us for that.
I, it seems that we've moved into the next agenda topics. I'll just officially introduce it as council comments committee reports and identification of future agenda items. So if there are other folks with those topics, that's fine. And if I did cut anybody off that wanted to talk about the city attorney's report, please add those comments in this section as well. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. And my hand was up for agenda item number nine. So under committee reports, I just want to let everybody know that there is a finance committee meeting next Monday. It will be from five to six o'clock. And the agenda will just be talking about the fire, the impacts of the Marshall Fire from a financial perspective. And so that's all the details we have at this point in time. But I just want to make sure everybody knew that because we're basically canceling all other committee and boards. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Most?
Yes, I just wanted to let community members know, as Council Member Dickinson said, we have a nine thirty briefing every day. And part of that briefing today was an introduction to, I think, the newest member of our staff, which is a recovery manager. So I just want to give a shout out to our fantastic city manager who managed to bring somebody on board so quickly and to just let the community know that even though it doesn't always appear as if things are moving, things are really moving at lightning speed. For us to bring someone on that quickly is really quite an accomplishment and goes to the dedication and the focus of our staff in really trying to be as responsive as possible. So I just wanted to let folks know that.
Thank you, Council Member Most. Council Member Lay?
Yeah, one sort of fun fact about that, our, our new manager is that he attended Coal Creek Elementary. So somebody who actually not only has really deep disaster experience and knowledge, but is, has some ties to our community, which are really pretty special. I thought that was pretty unusual and, and a good thing. I mentioned in our briefing this morning something that I guess I'd put on the future agenda. I'd like to bring it up in a future agenda. I, I think it'd be a good idea at some point to have the humane society or the humane societies that are that have been working with people who've lost animals or who have animals that have not yet been found. To, to make a presentation about that to our council, I think it would be really useful. I, I know this is a, an issue for a lot of people who've lost their homes and I think some of the information might be very helpful, informational about what, what happened, what didn't happen and some thoughts that those folks have about the recovery effort in terms of people moving, moving forward. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Blay. Any other council comments for this evening? All right. Well, I'll see you all at the study session tomorrow. And I just want to thank the public for attending and for, for helping us understand all of the, the things that we need to be working on. So thank you for all of the input and continue to please provide it. See you all tomorrow, tomorrow morning at nine thirty.
Thanks.